I would like to remind everyone that this meeting of the town council is being aired live and recorded. In addition, I would ask the counselors, please to maybe take just a moment to move the microphone a little closer to yourself. I'm guilty of this as well, but I know that we've had some past comments that some of our remarks haven't been picked up very clearly. Thank you. Firstly, there are condolences to be announced this evening. The council is aware of the recent passing of two veterans in the town. First, I would call to your attention the passing of Mr. Richard A. Stanton. He passed on June 17th, 2022. Mr. Stanton served in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. In addition, Mr. Kevin M. O'Brien has passed on July 4th, 2022. Mr. O'Brien also served in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. And I would ask, please, that you kindly join me in a moment of silence for the passing of these veterans. Thank you. Thank you very much. The first order of business this evening is the approval of minutes from prior meetings. This may be a little more challenging than is customarily the case. We have three meeting dates to consider approval of and owing to a number of absences over the course of those past three meetings. Some counselors may not be here now in order to take part in approval or would need to abstain from the vote because they were not present during the meeting in question. The first meeting is the minutes of May 24th, 2022. Absent during that session were Peter Colombodis, Frank Souza, Matt Rushton, and Sean George. I think that we may have, in fact, for that meeting, a quorum able to, actually no, Mr. Souza, I'm afraid you were not, and Mr. George. So we were unable to approve the minutes for the meeting of May 24th at this time. The next meeting was June 7th. Absent from that meeting were Peter Colombodis, Mr. Souza, and Mr. Wood. So I believe that once again, we probably would not have a quorum for the purpose of approval of those minutes. And finally, the meeting of June 21st, 2022. Absent were counselors Kevin Perry and Sean George. Perhaps we can consider this approval of this action.
We have a winner.
Is there a motion?
To approve.
Motion to approve. And second, thank you. Any discussion? Thank you very much. We will be conducting all of our votes this evening by roll call vote owing to the remote participation of Consular George. Could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
I'm staying.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to announcements from the president, I do have one announcement. I've received, as did all the counselors, just today, a message from our town clerk, Mary Lee Hunt, with respect to the status of some of the charter changes that have been approved by the town council and forwarded to the state legislature for adoption. And Mrs. Hunt informs us, she has just spoken with Representative D'Amelia, and she wants to offer us a little update on the status. The changes have left the Senate and are now with the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. Representative D'Angelo D'Amelia did speak with Representative Paul Tucker, who is vice chair of that committee. It's not clear whether the changes will go directly to the House Ways and Means Committee or how it will be handled, Mrs. Hunt reports. So I think the takeaway from our perspective is that there is movement on Beacon Hill to approve our changes. The most significant impact of not yet having approval of those changes, of course, is that the town election, which was conducted in April of this year, but did not include on the ballot, the election of town council members, will still need to be delayed. And I understand from Mrs. Hunt that it's not feasible at this point for the September primary election to feature that those elections on the ballot. So it would likely be in the November state election if, in fact, the state has taken approval action by that point. So that's just a word of update I wanted to provide to the public and to the counselors. Proclamations, we do have a proclamation this evening. It is the Town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts City of Peace Proclamation. And I would invite Fran Jeffries to come forward, if you would, and provide to us an introduction. I would appreciate that.
Thank you very much, council people and Bridgewater citizens. I'm really, really happy to tell you that Bridgewater is now an international city of peace. We've joined an all volunteer organization of cities around the world who each have their own way of doing a city of peace and have different structures. Ours will include working, a working group and includes existing organizations, the Rotary Club of the Bridgewaters, the Dice and BCCR, the Public Library, the First Parish Unitarian, and the Martin Richard Institute, and the Menneke Institute at Bridgewater State University. We've supported each other in the recent Juneteenth celebration and will now are planning for the Second Annual Peace Building in Bridgewater and Beyond Week of Events, and you'll hear more about that, I'm sure. It's a, just a wonderful time. The, the International Cities of Peace or the larger organization actually has special consultative status at the UN. So it brings us from things that are right here in our community to connecting with other cities of peace, to connecting with organizations that are looking at the social and economic conditions that contribute to peace worldwide. So I'm thrilled to request the proclamation from you, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Why, thank you very much, Mrs. Jeffries. I think it's a wonderful endeavor that's been undertaken. Again, I've commented in the past about the importance of active participation by individual citizens as well as grassroots organization here in Bridgewater. You've referred to a number of them, and I certainly concur that the importance of this event should not be understated. I think it's truly a badge of honor for the town to be associated with the International Cities of Peace. And I thank you very much for your efforts to spearhead this initiative. Congratulations. Moving on to citizen open forum, I would invite citizens who would care to deliver comments to the council to please, please go to the podium, introduce yourself, identify your street, and you may proceed with your comments. Is there any citizen? Yes, please, go right ahead.
Been a long time coming in here. Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. First off, I wanted to mention, and I did talk to the town clerk about this. I had trouble with the new website, can't get any agendas. I didn't even know about this meeting until yesterday when somebody asked me about it because of the raw milk situation that's coming up. And there's been other people, she said. So she suggested I mention that, that there's been difficulty for some of us to get on that. I usually get notifications. I didn't get any notification. I'm set up for just about every committee. And I have since the new website. So just so you know, there's an issue that hopefully can be worked out. I know you're gonna be, there's a presentation about the hazards of raw milk. There's also the ordinance. Bridgewater doesn't have any restriction to have selling raw milk at a farm. But now we're talking about hazards of raw milk. And I'm hoping that we can, I have no idea what's going to be presented, but hoping if it's a situation that we will be allowed to have in a bottle at some point at another meeting with other people that show the value and of raw milk and what is not a risk as some people are afraid of. It's a personal choice. People want to drink it. They do their homework. It's only done at a farm. It can't be at a retail store. And they are under even probably more stricter regulations than somebody who sells it for pasteurization. So you have to keep that in mind. You can't just say, oh, you know, it's bad for you. Any food can be at risk, but this is strictly regulated. And there are a lot of places around that sell it. People want it. There are benefits to it. You don't have to drink it. So it's just nice that people have that option. It's not going to be a mass, you know, infection, you know, for everybody. It's isolated and it's, they do need to, you have to take that in consideration. But I hopefully we can, if necessary, be able to present a rebuttal if we need to. I'm hoping that's an option. And I will let somebody else who knows better than me talk too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson.
Good evening. Denise Shepherd-Pakev. And I'm probably not the person that Janet wanted to follow with more information, but I'm a cheesemaker. And I'm definitely in favor of raw milk being sold here in town. I have to drive to either Foxborough or Westport and have been for years where it's sold on farms. I know that it's highly regulated. I know that the, the farms are tested very, very frequently. They have very high standards of sanitation and production. It makes fabulous cheese. I make it for my, my family and friends. I know the, the state regulation, you can't sell raw milk cheese in the state unless it's been aged 60, 60 days. I realize that. But you can give it to your friends and family and they just devour it. So I'm really, I would, I would love to see Bridgewater be able to have it. I know it's safe. I, I, I drink it. And I make cheese with it and it, it makes fabulous cheese. And I think it's an opportunity that we should have here in Bridgewater. You know, other farms have it and I think it'd be great for Bridgewater. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Any other citizen? Yes, Dr. Hunt.
Good evening. I am here in support of the raw milk sale in the town of Bridgewater. I noticed that there's a presentation on the hazards, but I also would urge and hope that whoever's doing that presentation would also convey Massachusetts regulations regarding the same. I think that's important to understand that is a highly regulated sale. I grew up in the 1940s. Yes, I'm very old. In the 1950s, drinking raw milk. I grew up on the farm that my dad milked out a couple head of cattle. Every day, we had two to three gallons. I had three brothers. The four of us would go through those three gallons into one day. The issue right now is the proper safety of the sale of raw milk. And it's extensively studied, and I think the Hanson's who are proponents of this are clearly people who care about their community. I don't think they would come forward with this if they thought it was going to be the hazard that some people may think it is. I would encourage the town council to enable this sale. And I've heard now the cheese, that's great. And so I urge you to pass this resolution or order, I guess it's an order. Yes, in order to enable the sale here in Bridgewater, even though the state allows it regardless. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Further comments? Yes, please.
David Hanson, 665 Pleasant Street. Most of the negative stuff you hear about raw milk is, I would say, because of what happens to it after it leaves the farm. In the particular incident that was brought up at the last meeting that this was discussed, there's, I'd be willing to bet that the person that made the ice cream was not the farmer, but the person that bought the milk from the farm, there could have been nothing wrong with the milk that was purchased. The, if you remember, they used to have a problem solver in the enterprise years ago. And there's one here for somebody asking where they can buy raw milk. And it said that they either had to go to Dartmouth or Foxborough to get their milk. I have a letter from somebody that saw something online or read something in the Boston Globe when it was, when I was interviewed back around 2010. He's all the way from Worcester County and was driving to New Hampshire to get milk because he wanted the raw milk. I'm, who knows whether I'll get into it or not. But it should be something that's available to the people of Bridgewater. And put a little spin on it. It doesn't make you drive slow or smell bad.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any other citizens for citizen open forum? It appears not. I, I thank you one and all for your comments. The next item on our agenda are appointments. We have a number of appointments to various boards and committees of the town. I would entertain a motion for approval of items A through E. If the council finds that appropriate. So moved.
So let's second that.
Thank you very much. I've just simply momentarily left item F so that we have a slightly different introduction for that. The candidates for appointment to the boards in each case of items A through E, I believe, have all come to us by way of the citizen committee who have voiced approval of these individuals for their respective roles. And I'll, I'll read the roles and names of the individuals and the terms for which they have sought appointment. To the planning board, Mr. Ted Healy as an alternate member for the term 2022 to 2027. To the planning board also MJ Spagon as an alternate member for the same term 2022 to 2027. The Elder Affairs Commission, a reappointment of Sandra Alley for the period 2022 through 2025. To the Energy Committee, Kristen Zarelli for the period, for the term 2022 through 2025. And for the Conservation Commission, Sarah Spurber for the term 2022 through 2025. I would entertain a motion for approval for those candidates in those positions. So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. If we could have a roll call vote, please, Deborah.
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
That's six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Also for appointment under item F, the, to the Finance Committee of the town is an appointment recommended by Consular Wood. The candidate is Lee Bean. And I would ask Consular Wood if he has comments to offer in support of that nomination.
Right. So let me start with making a motion to nominate. Let me introduce Lee before anyone seconds it. Lee Bean has been a member of the Bridgewater community for most of his life. He's lived outside for a little bit, but he grew up down the street from me. I've known him for quite a long time. He approached me about a year ago with an interest of serving on FinCom. And his background, as, as some of you may have seen, but I'll describe, I think suits him well for that position. So Lee lives over on 40 Vera Drive, which was not in the email that was distributed earlier. He's lived there for quite a while. He has a business economics degree from Brown University. He's got a 15-year career in consumer packaged goods, and now he's a director of sales at a very large firm. He has a good understanding of the finances. I've talked to him a number of times about different finances and budget, budgetary items. And he clearly understands the process and is very interested in, in supporting the, the FinCom membership in their activities.
Thank you very much. I would just note for the benefit of the public that the town finance committee is comprised of members who are appointed by, from various sources. The town manager makes certain appointments, the town clerk as well makes certain appointments, and the town council. Now, this particular vacancy on the finance committee is in fact a town council appointee position. And for that reason, it's not necessary for this appointment to have been recommended for adoption by the Citizen Advisory Council. That's why we've adopted a slightly different procedure in connection with the approval of this appointment. So I would entertain a motion for approval. So moved. Second. Motion made and seconded. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, do we have a letter of interest from him though, or?
There was one that Deborah passed out separately.
I know you're.
It didn't get included in the agenda.
I know you were interested in him being on the committee, but is he interested?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, I would ask for, please, a roll call vote for the appointment of Mr. Bean to the Finance Committee.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Just with respect to all of the appointments that we've approved this evening, I want to extend congratulations and many thanks to each of the candidates. It's obviously necessary for the town to rely upon, you know, the participation of such well-qualified individuals in these important positions. And their contribution to the town in that regard is to be noted. We thank them. Moving on to hearings, we have two hearings this evening. The first of which, it is now 7:28 PM. Order FY22-065, laying out and accepting a private way, Crimson Way. And the sponsor of this order is Consular Moore. I'll turn it over to Consular Moore.
Sure. I'll be brief. This is a small extension, I think offline in place, down off of South Street in my neck of the woods. Great neighborhood, beautiful street, beautiful houses. I drove down there today and got some waves. So I'd encourage everyone to consider this.
Thank you very much, Consular. Let me begin by simply asking if there are any general questions from the public with respect to this order of acceptance of this as a, as a public way in the town of Bridgewater. Any questions of general interest? Is there anyone from the public who cares to speak in favor of this order? None? Does any member of the public wish to speak in opposition to approval of this matter? And once again, seeing none. We will move to questions from the town counselors, if any. Mr. Wood? No, no hesitancy. It's been vetted by all the relevant departments and they have all signed off. Thank you both. Are there any further questions from the counselors? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, gentlemen. Then I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood? Did I say your name twice?
Mr. Moore also agrees.
Oh, I'm sorry. What am I doing? Six in favor, zero opposed.
Only counting one of those two.
Thank you very much. I will declare the hearing closed on the matter of the approval of the, as a public way for Crimson Way. Moving to our second public hearing of the evening. Time is 7:31. And I will open the public hearing on the matter of proposed ordinance FY22-024, zoning ordinance, zoning map amendment, Main Street. And I'll first turn to Consular Souza, if you would like to offer any introductory comments.
Okay, it is just a correction. Part of the parcel was when they rezoned it, it was split in half. And all they're trying to do is get the entire square footage into the same zoning as it was changed to. Okay? That's what we're trying to do. Just correct a little mistake that was made, I guess.
That's it. Thank you. I appreciate that. The, I just note that, in fact, the Community and Economic Development Committee had had approved this measure with, in a joint meeting with the planning board on May 25th. It has subsequently been introduced in the council where an amendment was approved that was removing one particular lot from the initial proposed ordinance. And the town council has approved that amendment. So it is here tonight for a, for a final reading. I would ask if there are any general questions from the public with respect to this zoning ordinance matter? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public care to speak in favor of the adoption of this ordinance? I see no one. Anyone from the public who would care to speak in opposition to approval of this ordinance? Once again, we see none. Are there further questions from the town council as to this matter? Consular Wood?
Thank you. To you, through you to the town attorney, if I could, and my mic is on now. So our amendment was to exclude Block 12 from the, from the zoning, which leaves it as is. And to construct it around, one and 14 stays the same, 13, 13 is, is within the zone. So my question specifically is, at some point in the future, should we decide to, can we come back and revisit the zoning of Block 12 if we pass this as it's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. I thank you. Other further questions from the counselors? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion at all? Mr. Wood?
I just refreshed some of my comments from the committee discussion and such. This came about because of one property that wanted to make an adjustment for parking and their parking was restricted because the zoning setup years and years and years ago did not, it was residential, it wasn't commercial, et cetera. And so the team really put an effort in to straighten out a line, said all those businesses on that side of Main Street for the five or six Main Street facing properties really are fixed for the future. And my comments back in the committee were 12 is acting as business. It is a business. In the future, it will likely be a business. And I thought, and I continue to think, there was an oversight not to include in the zoning piece because for various reasons. I think this straightens out this piece. There's other strategic pieces we need to straighten out in the same way. And maybe we need to do that proactively and not wait for property folks to come and approach us on that, that front. And the last comment is the house itself. So throughout the hearings and through And the last comment is the house itself. So throughout the hearings and throughout the conversations on this, no one has commented on the house, which is an old house. The old house follows falls under the years ago, we put a demolition ordinance in place. And there is a process that has to go through with the historic commission and others involved that effectively delays but does not stop the demolition. And I raised that because there was a there was an outcry when the two houses that C V S came down. But it's it strikes me as odd that no one has said anything about this house, which is effectively in the same age range. And I just wanted to say those so that people were aware of where of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. And thank you also, Mr. Souza. I know that you had also previously endorsed the contention that this should really have been a more comprehensive view and not isolated to one side of the street in effect.
Correct.
I thank you both. We have a motion and a second. I would ask please for a roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. I think that given that result, I will declare the second hearing of the evening closed. And the time is now seven thirty seven. Moving on, we have no license transactions this evening. There is a presentation that I have planned. I will ask if if ever if you can.
Michael has it.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Mr. Dutton will queue up. Point. From beginning? Right above that.
Right there?
From beginning?
Oh. There we go. Thank you.
I got that right.
First day with a computer.
Thank you. We've had recent discussions with respect to the matter of the sale of raw milk here in Bridgewater. And there have been developments that only as of a week or so ago, we had become aware of and will discuss those actually coming up on the agenda in a short while. My feeling is that there's a substantial body of scientific and medical evidence that would suggest the hazards of raw milk. And I've actually distributed to the counselors a document titled, The Ongoing Public Health Hazard of Consuming Raw For Seventeenth Twenty Nineteen and US Department. The reason I provided this, just this document actually very comprehensive in scope. It was drafted for issuance to state and territorial epidemiologists and state public health veterinarians. Nonetheless, it is not overly scientific in its approach. It's really very understandable. And for anyone who cares to delve deeper, it's very well annotated with references to dozens of studies and please something that the counselors may consider themselves individually. What I wanted to present to you in this power are some excerpts from from websites, many of which are under the auspices of the organizations whose logos you see represented on the screen here. Many of them are governmental organizations. Some of them are non governmental organizations. Items in the end of this. So not to try any of my own comments. Guard. I will just let the C D. This production to and products made. And if I could have the next slide. Takeaways from this. Is that it? Bruce. Jesus. That. Just scroll down one. Or no, there you are.
You need a microphone.
Thank you. Go back one.
There's a little bit of a delay.
There we are. That's it. It identifies some germs linked to raw milk outbreaks. It identifies several here. Poli salmonella and list. Potentially can also be transmitted through. Some of these slides will refer to some of them. If you could have the next slide, please. From the John Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. Drinking raw milk dramatically increases risk for foodborne illness analysis finds. And the next slide shows from that study. For their study, a team of investigators led by Keith Knopman, Ph D, Director of the Public Health and Food Production Program at C A Bloomberg School screened approximately one thousand articles and reviewed eighty one published journal articles and benefits of cow's milk. Microbial contaminants commonly found include infectious salmonella actor and Listeria C's along with E. coli. Age seven. These bacteria can cause foodborne illness in humans, including diarrhea, vomiting, cramping, fevers, and sometimes more serious consequences such as kidney. The next slide, please. Deadly disease caused by raw milk has already put nineteen states on high alert. This appeared in Science Alert. It's dated February fifteenth twenty nineteen. And the next slide shows us a an excerpt from that particular article. As a result, roughly half of all U S states have banned the sale of raw milk. While this tactic isn't foolproof, the C D C claims that as many more states allow the sale of raw milk, the number of associated outbreaks has gone up. From nineteen ninety three to two thousand twelve, raw milk was responsible for one hundred and twenty seven disease outbreaks, including nearly two thousand individual cases and one hundred and forty four hospitalizations. Most of these cases were caused by Brucella campylobacter, certain types of E. coli or salmonella. And the next slide, please. From the same site. On the other hand, the risks from raw milk are clear. Out of all foodborne illnesses linked to dairy products, raw milk and raw cheese are responsible for no less than ninety six percent. This means that unpasteurized dairy products cause eight hundred and forty times more illnesses and forty five times more hospitalizations than their pasteurized counterparts. It is an unheard of for people who drink raw milk to contract rare diseases, which, if they aren't treated properly, can sometimes lead to paralysis, stroke, kidney failure, and even death. Next slide, please. Massachusetts Governor Wants Public Health Oversight for Raw Milk, dated August sixteenth twenty eighteen. And the next slide shows us a an excerpt from the governor's comments at that time. Baker favors language saying such rules and regulations shall consider applicable publications of the Food and Drug Administration, Public Health Service, United States Department of Health and Human Services, or any successor agency with like regulatory powers. Provided, however, that the Commissioner of Public Health may adopt more stringent standards in order to minimize the risk of milkborne illness to the public. And the governor at that time was responding to proposed legislation that would have provided an easing of regulation of on the sale of raw milk in Massachusetts. And the next slide. Raw milk F A Qs. This is provided by the American Dairy Association. There's a there are actually quite a few that we won't need to go into here because there's, you know, a certain degree of repetition, as you can already tell. But it refers to certainly milk and milk products provide a wealth of nutrition benefits. Raw milk, though, can potentially harbor dangerous bacteria, causing serious health risks to you and your family. Being informed, consumer. Next slide, please. Pharmacy Times had some interesting comments. Adverse effects associated with consuming raw milk include diarrhea, stomach cramping, vomiting, kidney failure, paralysis, and death. Raw milk may contain harmful germs, including Campylobacter, Cryptosporidium, E. coli, Listeria, and Salmonella. Educate patients that there are no known health benefits from consuming raw milk that cannot be obtained from drinking pasteurized milk that is free from disease-causing bacteria, parasites, and viruses. Dispel common myths that raw milk can prevent or cure diseases, including asthma, allergies, heart disease, or cancer. It goes on to identify some of the sources of contamination of raw milk that could lead to the potential cause of diseases. These include cow feces coming into a contact with milk, cow diseases, insects and rodents, humans through cross contamination, bacteria living on the skin of cows, and cow udder infections. Next slide, please. From Scientific American, Gut E. coli, Raw Milk's Appeal Grows Despite Health Risks. And the next slide. From the article, such outbreaks are largely preventable if milk is pasteurized, said Robert Tucks, Deputy Director of the Division of Foodborne Bacterial and Mycotic Diseases at the U S Centers for Disease Control. The process, known as high temperature, short time pasteurization, was invented more than a century ago and relies on heat at least seventy two degrees Celsius for fifteen seconds to kill the stew of E. coli, Campylobacter, Listeria, Salmonella, and other microbes that may lurk in milk that comes straight from a cow or goat. Medical experts consider pasteurization as one of the major breakthroughs in public health history. A triumph, talks adds. Next slide, please. This is an article that appeared in a publication from the National Institutes of Health. And the next slide has an excerpt of interest. Claims related to improved nutrition, prevention of lactose intolerance, or provision of good bacteria from the consumption of raw milk have no scientific basis and are myths. Next slide, please. From the Food and Drug Administration, Raw Milk Misconceptions and the Danger of Raw Milk Consumption. Next slide. Summary, none of the claims made by the raw milk advocates that we have examined for you can withstand scientific scrutiny. Unfortunately, the false health benefits claimed claims of raw milk advocates may cause parents to give raw milk to their children and prompt immunocompromised people, people such as pregnant women, the elderly, and hospitalizedized patients who want better nutrition to start consuming raw milk. It is these very same subgroups of the population, however, that are most at risk for becoming ill or even dying from foodborne illness as a result of consuming adulterated raw milk. Next slide, please. From the Periodical Infection Control Today, Exposures to Drug-Resistant Bru擦losis Linked to Raw Milk. And the next slide gives us an excerpt. This is actually an excerpt describing bru擦losis provided from the Mayo Clinic. Bru擦losis is a bacterial infection that spreads from animals to people. Most commonly, people are infected by eating raw or unpasteurized dairy products. Sometimes the bacteria that cause bru擦losis can spread through the air or through direct contact with infected animals. Signs and symptoms of bru擦losis may include fever, joint pain, and fatigue. The infection can usually be treated with antibiotics. However, treatment takes several weeks to months. And the infection can recur. Bru擦losis affects hundreds of thousands of people and animals worldwide. Avoiding raw dairy products and taking precautions when working with animals or in a laboratory can help prevent bru擦losis. Next slide, please. From the Periodical Food Safety News, Remembering the Sad Nineteen Eighty Five Listeriosis Outbreak. And the next slide gives us an excerpt. This is actually provided from the Centers for Disease Control. Listeriosis is a serious infection caused by the germ Listeria monocytogenes. People usually become ill with Listeriosis after eating contaminated food. The disease primarily affects pregnant women, newborns, older adults, and people with weakened immune systems. It's rare for people in other groups to get sick with Listeria infection. Listeriosis is usually a mild illness for pregnant women, but it causes severe disease in the fetus or newborn baby. Some people with Listeria infections, most commonly adults sixty five years and older, or and people with weakened immune systems, develop severe infections of the bloodstream, causing sepsis or brain, causing meningitis or encephalitis. Listeria infection can sometimes affect other parts of the body, including bones, joints, and sites in the chest and abdomen. Next slide, please. From Web M D. Steer Clear of Raw Milk Researchers Warn. And the next slide gives us an excerpt. The researchers warned that people are nearly one hundred times more likely to get a foodborne illness from raw unpasteurized milk than from pasteurized milk. While some claim that raw milk is healthier and tastes better than pasteurized milk, the report author said that their findings show that raw milk carries significant health risks. People should not drink it, they said. The team at the John Hopkins Center for a Liveable Future reviewed eighty one published journal articles about raw cow's milk. They found it often was contaminated with salmonella, Campylobacter, Listeria, and a dangerous type of E. coli. These bacteria can cause foodborne illness, leading to diarrhea, vomiting, cramping, fever, and even kidney failure or death. Next slide, please. From the New York State Department of Health, The Dangers of Drinking Raw Milk. And the next slide gives us a an excerpt. The bacteria in raw milk can seriously affect the health of anyone who drinks raw milk or eats foods made from raw milk. While some people will have mild illness from bacteria in raw milk, others are at much higher risk of life threatening illness, especially pregnant women, children, the elderly, and people with weakened immune systems, such as people with cancer or H I V infection or recipients of organ transplants. Next slide, please. From the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, F A Qs About Buying Raw Milk in Massachusetts. As Mrs. Hanson has correctly pointed out, raw milk is available in Massachusetts on farms, which have received a certificate of registration from the Department of Agricultural Resources. There's one excerpt. I'll just draw your attention on the next slide from this list of F A Qs. Every tank of milk for pasteurization is tested. Every tank of milk for pasteurization is tested. Raw milk is only tested once a month. Next slide, please. Whittier Farms Pasteurized Milk Listeria Outbreak Lawsuit, Massachusetts, two thousand and seven. And the next slide offers an excerpt. Of the five people sickened, three were male and the median age was seventy-five, range thirty-one through eighty-seven. All five patients were hospitalized. All three of the males, seventy-five to eighty-seven years old, including Mr. Powers. Died from sepsis attributed to Listeria and died close to the time of their acute illness onset. The first case in the female was in a thirty-one-year-old woman who had, I will not be able to pronounce it. Chorio amnioitisis, I know I didn't pronounce that correctly, I apologize. At thirty-six weeks of gestation. She delivered a healthy but premature infant. A subsequent placental culture tested positive for Listeria. The second case in a female was in a thirty-four-year-old woman who had a fever and abdominal pain. She experienced a stillbirth at thirty-seven weeks gestation. And cultures of her blood, fetal blood, and placental tissue all were positive for Listeria. The next slide, please. The Food Poison Journal, Milk Confirmed as Source of Massachusetts Listeria Outbreak. And there's no particular excerpt that I've commented that I've selected from that article. It's just a an additional source, a little repetitive probably. From the following slide. This is something from the University of Minnesota. Center for Infectious Disease Research and Policy. And an excerpt of interest to us is on the next slide. The group's findings come from a review of a hundred and twenty-one dairy-related outbreaks that were reported from nineteen ninety-three. To two thousand and six in all fifty states. And an analysis of the nation's milk production during the same period. Their findings appeared online today in emerging infectious diseases. The outbreaks were linked to four thousand four hundred and thirty-one illnesses, two hundred and thirty-nine hospitalizations, and three deaths. Raw milk or yogurt or cheese made from raw milk were implicated in sixty percent, seventy-three. Of the outbreaks and was responsible for nearly all of the hospitalizations. Of the seventy-one outbreaks linked to raw milk. Fifty-five or seventy-seven percent occurred in states where the products are legal. The next slide, please. From the American Academy of Pediatrics. Consumption of raw or unpasteurized milk and milk products by pregnant women and children. And the next slide gives us an excerpt. Efforts to limit the sale of raw milk products have met with opposition from those who are proponents. Of the purported health benefits of consuming raw milk products. Which contain natural or unprocessed factors not inactivated by pasteurization. However, the benefits of these natural factors have not been clearly demonstrated in evidence-based studies. And therefore, do not outweigh the risks of raw milk consumption. Substantial data suggests that pasteurized milk confers equivalent health benefits compared with raw milk. Without the additional risk of bacterial infections. Next slide, please. From the Center for Disease Control. Increased outbreaks associated with non-pasteurized milk, United States, two thousand and seven through two thousand and twelve. An excerpt tells us nineteen ninety-three through two thousand and six, fifty-five outbreaks or seventy-five percent. Linked to raw milk occurred in states where it was legal to sell raw milk products. The rate of outbreaks linked to raw milk fluid is more than twice as high in states that allow the sale of raw milk. Than in states that do not allow its sale. The rate of outbreaks leaked to cheese made from raw milk is nearly six times as high in states that allow the sale of raw milk. Than in states that do not allow its sale. Restricting the sale of raw milk products reduces outbreaks linked to raw milk. The next slide, please. Frontiers in Public Health. Building the evidence base for the prevention of raw milk-acquired brucellosis, a systemic review. And the next slide tells us, interestingly, despite the significant public health. Risk that raw milk presents to consumers, the sale of raw milk for human consumption is not prohibited in all states in the U.S. Currently, thirteen states allow raw milk to be sold in retail stores. Seventeen states allow raw milk to be sold only on farms where the milk is produced, that would include Massachusetts. Eight states allow raw milk to be attained via the cow share program. Which involves leasing of cows to obtain a percentage of a cow's milk production. While twenty-one states prohibit the sale of raw milk for human consumption. Interestingly, outbreaks of raw milk-related diseases, including brucellosis. Have been reported mostly in states that legalize the sale of raw milk. And the next slide, please. Raw milk loophole results in drug-resistant bacteria outbreak in Colorado. This from Infectious Disease News. And there was a brief excerpt that provided from this article. According to the CDC, people may drink raw milk on pasteurized milk in an attempt to get back to nature. By consuming fewer processed products. But the agency considers raw milk to be one of the riskiest food items that a person can consume. Next slide, please. This is actually from the state of Arkansas. It's an article that talks about a particular case and I have an excerpt. After drinking the raw milk, which was contaminated with E. coli. McGonigal Martin's son became very sick. He was diagnosed with hemolytic uremic syndrome, which can cause kidney failure. Doctors had to fight to save his life. Luckily, with the help of dialysis and a ventilator, McGonigal Martin's son survived. For some, getting sick from raw milk can mean many days of diarrhea, stomach cramping, and vomiting. For others, it can mean kidney failure, paralysis, chronic disorders, and even death. While it is possible to get foodborne illness from many different foods, raw milk is one of the riskiest of all. The next slide, please. From the Ministry of Health, Ontario, Canada. And I have a brief excerpt. Milk must be pasteurized in order to be sold in Canada. Canada does not allow the sale of raw milk at all. Pasteurization ensures the milk we drink is safe while retaining the nutritional properties of milk. While some people believe that raw milk offers greater nutritional value than pasteurized milk. Research indicates that there is no significant difference. You should weigh any supposed health benefit against the overwhelming evidence that drinking raw milk can make you ill. Children are particularly at risk for infections from drinking raw milk. Next slide, please. Speaking of children, the American Academy of Pediatrics. Consumption of raw or unpasteurized milk and milk products by pregnant women and children. And I think I do not have a particular excerpt from that article. You can be glad. And the next slide. A raw cheese is being blamed for a Listeria outbreak that includes two deaths. This appeared in. Modern Farmer in two thousand and seventeen. And I think again, I do not have a an excerpt from that article. In the Journal of Dairy Science. A survey of foodborne pathogens in bulk tank milk and raw milk consumption among farm families in Pennsylvania. Between nineteen seventy-three and nineteen ninety-two, raw milk was associated with forty-six outbreaks. Of foodborne illness in the United States. And it is significant to note that forty, forty, eighty-seven percent of these outbreaks occurred in states. Where the interstate sale of milk was legal at the time. Consumption of raw milk is a high-risk behavior and will continue to cause morbidity and mortality. Until people stop consuming raw milk and raw milk products. The next slide, please. Infection Control Today is from two thousand and twelve. Majority of dairy-related disease outbreaks linked to raw milk. I have no excerpt from that particular article. And the next slide, once again, brings us back to the beginning. The various governmental and non-governmental agencies that are prominent in emphasizing the hazards of raw milk. I have no further comments, no nothing further to present. I thank you very much. I know some of that was a little tedious to work through. I think it's all very important and I certainly appreciate your attention. Moving on to.
Mister President, may I ask one question?
Yes, go right ahead.
I believe there are seventeen farms in the state of Massachusetts to sell raw milk.
Yes.
In the past ten years, how many cases of illness have been reported?
I don't know how many. I know there have been some. I I can't answer that.
How many have been contributed to lettuce? Huge numbers across the country. Okay, I'm looking at home. We're looking at how our state is controlling. The farmers and the product and the sales and educating people. Those are the numbers I want to know. I want to know in the past ten years, how many people in this state were ill? How serious were those illnesses? And did anybody die? That's the that's the facts that I'd like to look at.
Some of which has been answered in in certain of my slides, but. I'll endeavor, I'll endeavor to research an answer to that question for you. I'm happy to do that. Is there anyone else who would care to pose a question, Counselor?
I just have a couple of comments and and I just want, I just want the, I would just want the public to know that that was not a council presentation. That was a presentation by one individual counselor. So it was not really part of what we as a council wanted to hear. It's a presentation by one counselor that did some research. And put it on the agenda as a presentation, which is fine. But it's not something the council endorses. As a whole. The other point I wanted to make is that you could you could do a research on any product. You could do a research on the health risks of cigarettes. We all know that. Health risks of alcohol, the health risks. Of chewing gum, the health risk of anything, and you could find. Reports from. Health and human resources, Health and Human Resources Administration on the downfall of all those products, probably even on water. Soda. Junk food, ice cream. You could you could do a presentation on pretty much any product. It's 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 safe. And responsible consumption of of anything. That's important. And when we run for public office, we run for public office to help people. And what we're trying to do is help a local business. And we're trying to help them with their business. Help them perhaps with a, an area that they they'd like to to do, like to get involved with. And as has been said before. They may not do this. They just want that option. And what's wrong with that? And you're right, I did not hear any statistics about recent, as Counselor Sousa had brought up. I did not hear any. Statistics that were presented tonight on. Those that are selling raw milk throughout this state. Any incidents hazards to people's health. Since that's been going going on. So I hope when we get to the later discussion on this, that we. We support the local business and what they want to do. We. So when, I I guess my question to you, Counselor Chase, is when when you presented these statistics to. The health agent in town or the Board of Health, what was their response?
I've invited the Board of Health. To participate in our meeting this evening. I also invited the Board of Health. To participate in the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting, which took place last week. Considering the proposal that was brought forth by Counselor Sousa. I don't believe unless I'm mistaken that any member of the Town Board of Health is present here this evening. I do know that I received a written comment. From Mister Dugados. Who was a member of the Bridgewater Board of Health. And he expressed strong support for the sale of raw milk here in Bridgewater. I told him previous to his comment that his comment would be made part of the record it now has. I also know that during the CEDC meeting, just a week or so ago. By remote participation, Pat Neary. Delivered a comment. And Pat Neary is an outgoing member of the Bridgewater Board of Health. And she also expressed support for the sale of raw milk. I will point out that since you've asked, Counselor, that. Neither Miss Neary nor Mister Dugados, to the best of my knowledge. Have the benefit of any training or experience in any medical area. As the public may know, our Board of Health is comprised of three individuals. One individual by state law must be a physician. And by our town code. One of those members of the Board of Health may be either a physician or someone active in. Some aspect of of medical practice. So I've only heard those comments from two members of the of the board. Again, Mrs. Neary being an outgoing member. So right now, the Board of Health in Bridgewater is consists of only two members. And I've not heard a word from the the third member. Nor apparently have any of the members elected to participate publicly in a meeting. Counselor Wood.
Well, I'm not done yet. So we we don't have any opinion from the health agent in this town regarding. This is this particular issue and based on the presentation that you presented to us with those. Statistics, which are alarming. I'm not saying they're not alarming statistics, but I would think. Something of that severe. That may have a negative impact on this, that we would have had an opinion from our from our Board of Health or from our health agent. Just as was brought up earlier, the simple approval of a of a road in this town, Counselor Wood asked a legitimate question. Was it properly signed off by the people that need to sign off on that road being approved? And the answer from the town manager was.
Can we leave the the debate until the article appears?
Well, I wanted, I'm not debating anything. I'm I'm giving my opinions. I'm not debating anything. So those are my concerns. I think that although I respect diligent, the due diligence that you did, I do think that was a little bit. Little bit much, but.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wood.
I I will say I appreciate the presentation. For many material like this is comes under what we say at work, TLDR. Too long, didn't read. And people miss some of the details that are coming out in in this area. I I I will withhold comments until we get to committee. I'd like to report on the committee discussion that we had. We independently, you and I had come to committee with similar material. And I I will say that there is not any abundance of information that counters. Any of this material in your presentation with, yes, we must have raw milk because it's so healthy, it's going to cure X, Y, and Z. And and so I think you gave a, although it may appear to be lopsided. If you start searching and Googling raw milk in the U.S., in Europe, in Canada. You'll find much of the same material being presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Moore.
Maybe just a final comment. I think as this discussion continues. I know there was a presentation about the desire to sell raw milk. I didn't necessarily hear anything about the benefit. Like what is, what is the reason? We're not even sure we want to do it. I would love to just sort of hear more about the business driver that that is behind this. The the second thing I would say is I would caution us about. Making opinions based on the fact that someone in Bridgewater didn't weigh in. I think if we're going to talk about credentials. We should look at the credentials of everyone in those reports, and I guarantee you those credentials are good. And the same thing with Massachusetts. I appreciate the fact that we might not have events in Massachusetts. This isn't an issue that is bounded by borders. So I think it is still relevant to look nationally and maybe globally and. What are, what what are the issues associated with raw milk outside of our borders? Because I think they're still relevant. That doesn't necessarily mean that we don't weigh the other side. But I think if we're going to talk about the facts, we should trust the people that study it. And we should. Trust the fact that they're studying it across a wide enough population.
Thank you, Counselor. Other further comments from the Council or questions?
Mr. President. Mister President.
Yes, Counselor Sousa.
The Massachusetts. Requirements that they have right now, when would they establish? Something that's been out there for fifty years, the sale to raw milk, or is it something that they put together ten years ago? So I I think that's going to be very relevant. So I, I think that's going to be very relevant too, uh, because a lot of these reports are more than ten years old. And if. Yeah, okay, if twenty two, thirty years ago. Happening and if all these rules were put in there and all these procedures that the farmers must follow and all of this is. Just been implemented ten years ago, for an example, okay? I, they probably tried to handle a lot of these issues that we talked about today.
That's also something I would need to research, Counselor. I don't know the answer to that. Alrighty, if there are no further comments or questions, uh, next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report. And I would turn it over to Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have a report on the Mitchell Elementary School. Uh, and I actually, since I can share my screen so well, I'll. Uh, share the screen here in a moment, but, uh, project is progressing well. Um, some slight delays, mostly attributable to, um, electrical, uh, delays in, in shipping the, um. Electrical components and installation of some of the electrical components, but otherwise, uh, otherwise on schedule. And, um, if you give me just one second, I will share. The screen. I can find it. Um, currently on schedule, the progress is, uh, is good. Finishes are going on. Painting, acoustical tile, plumbing fixtures, all the things that you would expect, uh, to be, uh, being done at this. Late date playground equipment going in, testing and balancing, something that doesn't necessarily happen. Uh, to such an extent in your, uh, in your residential building, but. There's a, a huge process to test and balance the H V A C systems and, and the other systems in the building. Um, the wifi was, uh, installed on Friday. Um, and, uh, all in terms of safety is, is good. Um, and, uh, and the furniture is on its way. Um, actually, the furn- furniture is being delivered currently. Alright, I'm not so adept. Um, just some pictures, um, so you can see some of the pro- progress. The acoustical tile, uh, is being set in the grids you can see on the left, and then the, uh, main lobby terrazzo flooring is being polished. And, uh, finished. Uh, casework is going into the classrooms, um. Including the fixtures, as I had mentioned. Skylights being capped properly and, uh, and some of the site work, the finished site work going on. This week. Utility poles going in, the sidewalk prep. Uh, a lot of sidewalks have already been poured. Some of the sidewalks, uh, continue to be, uh, installed, uh, throughout the next two weeks. It's too small to see. And I just want to give you sort of the, the project milestones. Uh, originally, the substantial completion date, which you see here is August fifteenth. Uh, originally, it was, uh, August eighth. That has been pushed out. Uh, only because the, uh, M S B A requires a certain amount of time to complete its. Uh, commissioning of the building. It hires a separate, uh, firm that does a separate commissioning. Uh, for M S B A purposes and, uh, and they required, uh, X number of weeks. And that pushed the substantial completion out to August fifteenth. Um, and as, uh, what the O P M, uh, on the project said at last night's meeting. Uh, substantial completion is essentially the issuance, uh, of the C O. Uh, so that is the target date for the issuance of the C O furniture. Uh, installation starts on Monday and will continue for a couple of weeks. Um, vendors will be in, uh, to do, uh, training on systems. Um, occupancy, the move, other, in other words, uh, moving. Um, items into the building, uh, from the current Mitchell at the middle will be the week of the twenty second. Uh, right now, there's a taxpayer tour, uh, resident tour scheduled for August twenty seventh. Um, we are, that date is not fixed in stone just yet because we're making sure that we don't have any other. Delays before we, uh, we sort of plow ahead with that date. Uh, first day of school is either the sixth or the seventh, and, uh, ribbon cutting ceremony, uh, is, uh, scheduled for September tenth. So that is, uh, where we are right now. We've got two other, uh, school building committee meetings scheduled for August eighth, August twenty ninth. And as always, the public is certainly welcome to attend. Um, they've been very, uh, efficient meetings. Uh, thus far, we've got a great, great committee. Uh, I will point out that this committee has, uh, met. Uh, as of next month, uh, will have met seventy one times, uh, on this project. And that does not include all the meetings that, uh, that have taken place, uh, with multiple others, including, um, you know. The, the special committees, uh, within the building committee. Uh, certainly the superintendent and the school staff, uh, have spent, uh, many more hours in meetings than, uh, than just the seventy one. Uh, school building committee meetings. So I just wanted to point that out. Uh, otherwise, the project is going well. Um, you can see here, uh, in twenty nineteen, we were projecting, uh, an eighty one. Point one four million dollar budget. Our current budget is sixty seven million one oh seven. Uh, rounded up sixty seven one oh eight. Uh, so we've seen some significant, uh, cost reductions when we went out to bid. We also saw a very favorable, uh, um, interest environment, uh, for municipal bonds. Uh, so we, we bonded, uh, the most, uh, really all the project. Quite a while ago, uh, which is not common, but, uh, so we locked in very favorable rates for taxpayers. Uh, over the next, uh, twenty five, thirty years. So that is essentially, uh, the report. All is, uh, good and coming down to the wire, but, uh, but, uh. Contractor, the owner's project manager and the architect are all working very closely together to get the, the job over the finish line and open for the school year. But happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Uh, yes, Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. Looking at the milestone sheet, I didn't see the lease agreement. And I, I don't think I did at least, and I think by our district agreement, this is a leased property back to the district. So I was wondering if maybe you could just speak to where that stands.
That, uh, we have not, uh, executed that. That is not really part of the building process. This is really part of the building process. Uh, this is the O P M's report, so the O P M wouldn't be involved in the, uh, you know, negotiating or executing a lease agreement, but we are working on that.
Great, thank you.
Are there further questions for the town manager? Mr. Wood?
Um, i- is that schedule and milestone up on the website where people can find it? I've had a few questions about the schedule. I like. The taxpayer tour, um, on the twenty seventh. I was asked about when the move, uh, looks like the twenty second is going to happen and your. First day of school is on track, so if you could find a way to highlight that on the webpage, I think we can all direct people. To that location if they have questions.
It is on the, uh, school building webpage, but we'll put it on the town webpage as well.
Thank you. Uh, further questions for the town manager? I see none. I would just, uh, thank you, Mr. Dutton. It's, uh, I think very gratifying and certainly very rewarding for the. Members of the, uh, school building committee to, uh, see this effort through to completion and, uh. With, uh, with really no serious setbacks, uh, whatsoever to date. It's, uh, yeah, truly a testament to their hard work and the. Great amount of due diligence that they have performed in, uh, in their duties. I thank you. Uh, moving on, we have no discussions scheduled for this evening. Uh, committee reports, uh, yes, Counselor Wood.
Uh, I, um. Uh, Counselor Columba is not here, so I'd like to report on the, um, economic, community and economic development committee. Discussion on the raw milk process and why I came back with, um, the recommend, the, what you see before you is. A two to one with no recommendation. Um, it, it was, I, I had originally asked for the Board of Health to come in. And, um, I, I think, um, Mr. Chase did too. I was more interested in not the health aspects of raw milk, but how our Board of Health was going to monitor the farm. And the handling of the raw milk. And, um, if you read other literature related to this, you'll know that. For milk handling, you have to bring the temperature down from the cow's temperature to forty degrees within two hours. It has to go into sterilized milk tanks. Um, it has to remain at forty degrees. And for the sale of raw milk in the, in the rec, in the rules and regulations, it has to remain under forty degrees. That's critical to stop the growth of the bacteria because pasteurization will kill that bacteria. And that's why the handling of pasteurized milk is much different. I was interested in why, what the, um. Word of health was going to set up as a plan for monitoring. Turns out the Board Health has no, um, purview in this case. They would not monitor the production or. Um, anything on the raw milk. That's a state function. Um, where you have, uh, you know, restaurant inspections and other inspections done periodically. The state drops by about once a month to the farm that's producing raw milk and takes a look at, at that point. Um, and it will do some testing about once a month, and that's in the regulations. Um, I find that kind of concerning myself, but, um, that's why I wanted the, the, um, Board of Health this. The second piece and the more important piece to this is during our discussion and why I came back with no recommendation. Was that the town council does not have to give permission to a farm to sell raw milk. The, there is no regulation in town right now by the Board of Health that restricts the sale of raw milk. It is a state function. The, the farm and it's, we're not just talking about Hanson Farm. It can be any farm or any farm in the future in Bridgewater that has to go through this. So it, it can be, and we're not just talking cows. The state legis, the state regulations also cover goat's milk. And so you could talk about Peterson's farm if they wanted to get into it, or a Wildwood farm, or some farm in the future. Um, I've tried looking up the definition of a farm. How do you become a farm? And, um, you know, how many cows can you have on your property if you wanted to become a raw milk farmer? Um, it's ambiguous about that, but so this, so the council, the committee discussion. And why I came back with no recommendation is because the council really has no action to take here. We could set up legislation, legislation to, uh, stop the sale of raw milk. But we don't have to do anything to start the sale of raw milk. It's a certification through the state. You have to get your herd certified. You have to have your rabies shots, tuberculosis shots. You have to have inspections, certification of dairy products. A lot of these other farms were already in the dairy business, um, and when they started selling raw milk. And it's, the process is handled by the state department, uh, department in the state, and I can't remember the full name of it. But there is no discussion that we really need to have here to allow Hanson Farm or any other farm. To start the process to sell raw milk. So I think it was my hope and others. That the sponsor would actually withdraw this from the council level, withdraw it from consideration because it's not needed. And it, it, it doesn't fit into, uh, how we give permission or restrict permission. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that. Uh, I as well attended that, um. Community and Economic Development Count, uh, Committee Meeting. And, um. I reported to the committee at that time. And to the general public, uh, much of what you've indicated, the fact that, uh, there is nothing that the town needs to do. To enable the sale of raw milk. It is strictly, as you said correctly, a state registration function. And it is apparent to us that there is no Board of Health regulation in Bridgewater currently. That would restrict or prohibit, uh, the sale of raw milk. And as I reported, uh, at that meeting, uh, to the committee and to the public, which, um, in fact included, um. Uh, Mr. And Mrs. Hanson at that, uh, meeting remotely, um. That they or any other farm in Bridgewater, uh, is perfectly able right now, tomorrow. To go to the state to apply for a certificate of registration. Uh, and to, uh, upon approval thereof, be able to sell raw milk in Bridgewater. Uh, so accordingly, we, we did extend to Counselor Sousa at the committee level. Um, the offer to, uh, if you will, to, um, uh, withdraw his, um, his proposed order. Um, nonetheless, uh, it was advanced to a vote. And the vote was two to one to return it to the council with no recommendation. Uh, for the reasons that Counselor Wood has, uh, just indicated. Um, so that is my contribution to the committee report on the, uh, Community and Economic Development Committee Agenda Item of. Uh, raw milk. Moving on. Legislation for action.
Raw milk.
Raw milk. What a surprise. Order F Y twenty two dash zero fifty six, the sale of raw milk. Counselor Sousa, you are the sponsor. Uh, you are, uh, invited to offer comments.
Thank you. I asked for a couple of pieces of information that we did not have, myself either. And you said you would look it up and bring it back. Okay. And, uh, we have had so much negativity tonight in reporting, okay, against, I should say. Uh, I think it's important that we get those figures and bring them out and get them out into the public before we go any further with this. Order. That's, that's my point. I think, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we just table it until all that information is back in. We bring it up again at the next meeting, present that information. So everybody who's listening in or anybody who's attending. They will hear that side of it as well.
So your recommendation is to continue the, the matter to a future meeting?
Yes, until that.
Mr. President. And brought. Point of information.
Yes. Counselor.
Yeah, thank you. Through you to the, to the town attorney. Uh, Mr. Rollins, with what Counselor Wood just brought up. Is this in fact something that we can move forward on if it's state? Regulated and state allowed. I, I, I don't want everyone to go through this exercise of getting all the data, just to find out at the end of the day. The order that we put through is unenforceable because it's allowed at the state level.
Well, does, so are, are you talking about what Counselor were, would mention relative to the fact that it came back without a recommendation? Or are you talking about the fact that it's already allowed at the state level? And because of that, um, there's really no action that the town of Bridgewater needs to take relative to this.
Right, because a- as the discussion was going on, I was trying to look up if there were any guidance on local regulation. I can't find any.
No, there is. There isn't. So it's, it's covered under mass general laws and then mass general laws cites to the C M R regulations. Which lay out the process by which a certificate could be ascertained under certain conditions, uh, by an applicant. Um, so, so essentially, everything is already covered under mass general laws for a farm. To apply, um, to do this. So, so. Mr. Wood's point is well taken that there really is no action, uh, that has to be taken by our town relative to this. Um, to allow anyone to, to try to apply to the state and the commissioner, uh, to receive their certificate.
So I, I guess the, the point of the matter I have is that, for the lack of a better term, I think this whole thing is a moot point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Because if, if we were, in all intents and purposes, if we were to ban. On milk sales. In Bridgewater, a farm could go, apply for a certificate, sell as long as they follow the rules and regulations. We would have no power to enforce our ban, correct?
Well, I, I think that's a different question. So, so what we have before us is. To allow, right, for this.
Okay.
And so I don't think it requires our town to give permission. For anyone to produce raw milk. So I want to stick with just that question because the other thing is a totally different question. Um, so, so the question I think that's before the council is, are these farms allowed to do that? And the answer is if they comply with mass general laws and receive a, a certificate from the commissioner, yes, they can. Um, regardless of where we're at. Um, so, so I, I do think Mr. Wood's point is well taken. That there is no action that you all have to take to allow local farms to apply and receive these certificates. I think they're covered under mass general laws, and I think they're covered under, um, the C M R regulations about what that process looks like.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to second.
I'd like to second Counselor Sousa's motion to table the item, which was his original motion.
Till we get the mention, information back.
Well, tabling is different than postponing.
Yeah, so your initial, his initial motion was to table.
And I'm.
Mr. Chase clarified as a continuance, so I'm not sure what the initial.
Continuance is what we're looking for.
Okay.
What I'm trying to do is, we, we just trying to listen to the other side. The questions were, what is happening in the state of Massachusetts under the governance of the program that the state currently has enforced? And we want the people to hear that and then, you know, go from there.
Mr. President?
So, Mr. Souza, your, your motion is what?
To continue this until we get the information that you said you would get back for us pertaining to the current farmers that are in the state of Massachusetts selling raw milk under the control of the state and has been any illnesses reported.
A second for discussion.
All right, go ahead, Counselor.
I, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna support the continuance because I don't think we need to, Counselor Souza. I think that whether this is voted up or down, it, it, the question is to, to allow them to do it. We don't need to have anything to allow the farms in Bridgewater to do this. They can do it like, like it's been presented. But I would say we should keep this on the agenda under discussion items if we want to keep having presentations about it. That's fine. And I think we can get to your, your, your questions can be answered without this being on the agenda through a discussion item. So that's why I would, that's why I'm not gonna support the continuance of the order because we don't, we don't need to vote on this. But to satisfy your questions and some of mine, you know, let's keep the discussion going though.
Okay, so if I was to withdraw this this evening, would the discussion come on the other information that I've asked for? Because that's all we really need.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, it's not a half hour, forty-five minute program. It's something that probably take five minutes, but I think it's something that we should hear.
Right, so I, I will personally undertake to attempt to answer those questions for you. And, and, and to the extent necessary, I'll confer with you privately to make sure that we have a mutual understanding of exactly what it is you're, you're looking for. And I suspect that I can provide whatever answer I receive at the, at the next council meeting in August.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. George.
Yeah, as long as it in order, I'd like to make a motion to table the order.
Well, I think we first have to, was there a motion and a second on the motion to continue already? I think there was because there was discussion.
Right.
So I think we need to do the vote on the motion to continue. And then once there's a vote on that, we can hear the motion to table.
Are you sure the motion to table doesn't, doesn't supersede the motion to the other motion?
You know, it might under parliamentary procedure. I don't have my Roberts rules with me.
I do.
You do, good. I, I, I need, I need my cheat sheet. If, if it, if it's precedential.
Of motion.
There we go. If it's table first, then you guys can vote the motion to table, obviously.
The order of precedence of motion shall be as follows. And number one is motion to adjourn, two is motion to recess, three is raise a question or privilege, four, to lay on the table.
Okay, perfect. So you can.
I'll second Counselor George's motion to table.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to table the discussion on this proposed order.
I, I will, I will add for parliamentary information, I believe it requires a two-thirds vote to table an item.
It does.
All right, thank you.
Are you tabling to a date certain?
No, tabling.
No, table.
Takes a ton.
Table. Mr. President, if I could add to the reason I'm in this direction.
We don't need to act on this. That's the point.
Oh, that accomplishes that.
Well.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the?
Yeah. Mr. President?
George.
Yes, that, my motion is to, is to table the, the order. My intent is not to stop the discussion around the pros and cons of raw milk. I do agree with bringing this to light. I would assume also that would give the opportunity for the proponents to bring the facts to light, educate the consumers and let them move forward. Thank you.
All right, very good. So just with respect to the order itself, we have a motion and a second to table this proposed order. And no further discussion, Counselors?
Just one, one, just to, just to reiterate that farms in this town can move forward to sell raw milk if they wish to. The fact that we're still throwing this around and bringing it back for, we're, it looks like it might get tabled, you know. Businesses can move forward if they want to. This council can, what the council is doing should, cannot, and should not affect what they want to do with raw milk. Unless there was something before us and we'd get it to that discussion if we did, if it was to ban it. But that's not before us. So this does not stop a business or dairy farm that has the right for this license to move forward to sell raw milk. They can move forward with this. Am I right or am I wrong?
He's correct, I believe.
We can still, so. As long as they have a certificate from the state.
They can move forward. They can move forward.
There's a process.
They can move forward to apply for the certificate, right? But I, I don't want there to be a misconception that any of us here are saying that they can produce raw milk.
I didn't say produce.
Yeah.
They can move forward.
For the application for a certificate. That's right. Yep.
So we have.
Talk about it all year long.
Does the certificate process require any?
No.
From the town?
No, it's, it's from the Commissioner of Agriculture, who they, and there's very specific CMRs on, as Mr. Wood pointed out, like the temperatures and the, and the type of tanks that they have to hold them in. And it's a process and then they have to display it. So once someone is, does receive the certificate in their room that has the holding tanks, they actually have to display the license. So we'll be able to check it, right? So if we find out there's, that, that could be an issue, but that, that's neither here nor there.
So I think we have before us a motion and a second to table discussion on the proposed ordinance, proposed order. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Mr. Souza?
Tabling it without discussion. All right, yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
I hope we don't see that on the agenda again.
We have further legislation for action. Order FY twenty-two dash zero five seven, order of taking, and I will defer to the town manager.
President, let me yet again pull up a map, your appraisal. Just a second. While I'm pulling this up, the lot in question is, or the small piece of property in question is at the corner of High, High Street and Wall. And it's roughly roughly eight hundred and fifty square feet on the corner. And it's designed so that the road configuration can be better suited to sightlines or better, better accommodate sightlines. So this is wall. This is High Street and the High Street Bridge there. This is the outlined piece of property. We've had several conversations with the owners and they are not opposed to the taking. There is a, an appraisal that we've done, which I believe shows that the taking would be a reduction in the property value of roughly six thousand dollars, which will be paid when and if the, the High Street Bridge and dam removal project is commenced. So that is it, right there, roughly eight hundred and fifty square feet. And as I say, the owner is well aware and we've had several meetings with them.
All right, I thank you, Mr. Dutton. I note that the Community and Economic Development Committee met on June thirtieth and voted three to zero to recommend adoption of this order. I would entertain a, a motion for approval.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And if I could ask please for a roll call vote.
It has to be referred to advertising.
Advertising.
Oh. I'm sorry, it is to be, it is to be referred to advertising. Thank you very much.
Motion to move to advertising. Second.
No need to vote again. I think we have inferred for the town manager.
Well, we have to vote on that.
Yeah.
We'll do a vote for consent to advertise.
Yep.
Then we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Yep, Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Order FY twenty-two dash zero seven five, ratification of the amended agreement for the Bristol Plymouth Regional School District. And I'll defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, the, although you've got a red line version in your packet that shows a lot of changes, most of those are, most of those changes are wording and grammar changes and so forth. The, the major change that the council is, is, or that the regional Bristol Plymouth Regional School District is really asking you to approve is the admission of Free Town as a member of the regional district. And so I would recommend, certainly recommend that. And quite frankly, the more towns that join the, the district, the more towns share in the, both the assessment and the capital cost of the new, of the new Bristol Plymouth. So I would encourage you to approve that.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Yes, Mr. Wood?
Ask questions before we make a motion, please. Through you to the, the town attorney. I think I asked this before, but I don't recall. We cannot make any amendments to this document. Is that right? Right, okay. And the second question goes to what you just, the comment you just made, which is the inclusion of the additional district, the, the additional town changes the district structures within BP structure. So how does that impact our, our any obligation for payment for the new school?
To the extent that Free Town is included, it would reduce the, our capital contribution by some amount depending upon the student population that Free Town sends.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I note that this order was not referred to any committee. Fourteen days have elapsed, therefore it may be finally considered this evening. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And I will ask please for, I'm sorry, please, Counselor, go right ahead.
Through you to the town manager. I guess similar to the last question of our costs going down, does this mean that students from Bridgewater that want to attend, there are now fewer students that could attend because we're making space for another town? I guess I'm trying to sort of weigh that seesaw.
In theory, yes. In practice, I think Free Town you'll find sends very limited number of students. Bridgewater traditionally has sent a fair number of students. We've got, I think, a hundred or more, I believe.
So we're not expecting a big impact on the offering to our students?
No, last time I looked at the projections that we, that both Bristol Plymouth and Bridgewater Rainham provided there wasn't a huge, there was, certainly wasn't a huge increase in the number of Bristol Plymouth folks, and there was not a huge increase in the regional district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wood.
For, for, for a future meeting, not necessarily tonight. But we all know that Rainham just voted down their debt exclusion on the BP. I'm not sure when the Bridgewater vote is gonna come up. I think this changes the picture a little bit with the numbers. And I would like to, as a counselor, understand the financial numbers a little bit better prior to us seeing the offer to, you know, offer for an election or a ballot piece. So in the next meeting or two, could you maybe put together, you know, an update on it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none. I would ask please for a roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Moving on to Resolution FY twenty-two dash zero ten, acknowledgement of the acceptance of remediation waste at Maryland's Landing Land Reclamation Project. To the town manager, please.
Mr. President, this is another of, a number of DEP resolutions that the council has passed over the last several years. As you may remember, Maryland's Landing is a capped landfill. The attempt is to fill a certain number of acres on the, it, it straddles the Bridgewater Halifax line. The Bridgewater side is looking to build the elevation ultimately to house a solar, I believe, to house a solar facility, solar farm. And, and so the fill is coming in. It's, it's reclamation from projects throughout Eastern Massachusetts. And it is all essentially governed by DEP regulations. It's very carefully tested and every load is tested before it gets added to, to the pile, so to speak. And so DEP, every step of the way, asks for both acceptance or acknowledgement of what's going on from both Halifax and Bridgewater. And, and Halifax, as I can tell you, Halifax has already accepted this particular order through their Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. And obviously it comes to you as, as the elected body in Bridgewater.
Well, thank you. I note that the Community and Economic Development Committee voted three to zero to recommend this action at their meeting on June thirtieth. Yes, Counselor Wood?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
And then discuss that.
Is there a second for discussion?
A second, thank. We have a motion and a second for approval. I would ask any further discussion, Counselor Wood?
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure when we were discussing exactly where Maryland's Landing it was. But if you, if you do a Google phone lookup of it, Maryland's Land, Maryland's Landing Bridgewater takes you right to the spot. You can clearly see the field behind. You can clearly see where the entrance is and where we're talking about. And we talked with a number of people throughout the process about what was gonna be taken in there and how it's gonna be disposed of. I did make a joke during the meeting that it was right down the street from the new Halifax marijuana shop. So it'd be convenient for that, but that's secondary. So, so it's, I think it's a good project. It's in a very, it's in the shared area between Bridgewater and Halifax. And as you heard, you know, filling it will allow a, a solar park to go in there at some point.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, Counselor Moore?
Thank you, maybe through you to the town manager. I just want to make sure I understand the, the project itself. So if I, if I understand it from the reading, we are bringing in contaminated soil that at one point was contaminated, but now is safe. And we're using it to reconstruct the land back to what it originally was. Is that right? Just help me sort of, I guess, maybe understand. What is, what is the benefit? What are we?
So, so as I mentioned, on the Halifax side and spilling over somewhat on the, on the Bridgewater side is a capped landfill. That capped landfill, as DEP requires, is constantly monitored and constantly tested. On the Bridgewater side, the effort is to raise the elevation to match the capped landfill. So it creates adequate acreage in order to put a substantial solar field. So it's really, it's not bringing it back to what it originally was necessarily. It's, it's being able to. create, create acreage at, at the same elevation, essentially.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, Consulor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. Through you to the town man. Mike, is, is there gonna be a cost to us associated with this?
No, in fact, there's absolutely no cost. We do, and, and they have generously offered to allow the town to use the facility at no cost. So it does cost other people some amount of money to be able to use that facility. We are allowed to use that facility for no cost.
No, no liability to us either.
And no liability.
And do we know what Halifax did on April twenty-sixth? Did they?
They approved it.
Okay.
Yep. They approved that.
Thank you. Further discussion? We have a motion and a second for approval. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Resolution FY twenty-two dash zero eleven, amend September twenty-twenty-two town council meeting date. The explanation I would offer simply is that it was determined that the scheduled meeting date for one of our council meetings, regularly scheduled council meetings in September would occur on the date of the state election primary, and we thought that that would be inconvenient, at least, if not problematic. And so the recommendation I have made is for the rescheduling of the date from September sixth to September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. This had been introduced at our last meeting. Fourteen days have elapsed. It was not recommended to, for referral to any committee, and therefore we can consider it finally this evening. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the matter? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. That's the conclusion of our legislation for action. There is no old businesses this evening. We do have two items of new business. The first is resolution FY twenty-two dash zero twelve, a resolution adopting the town of Bridgewater, Mass. Hazard mitigation plan twenty-twenty-two. And once again, I would please defer to the town manager for comment.
Mr. President, the hazard mitigation plan completed in conjunction with OCPC is a plan that, that essentially guides us in how we avoid multiple natural hazards and, and manmade hazards. It is a plan that's been completed. OCPC has spearheaded several, a number of public meetings and also several public hearings. They've have shared drafts and, and now have a final version that needs to be adopted by the council. There is, we will make sure that you have a copy of it, obviously, but we, there is some urgency to the plan itself because we need to have that approved by your meeting in August in order to get reimbursed, I believe it's eighteen thousand dollars from the state that helped us complete the plan. So, so it is there for your approval. It's completed, and as I say, we will make sure you have copies of it shortly so that you can review that.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
A, a motion for?
For, we get a move it someplace, right?
A motion for referral to the Community and Economic Development Committee?
Sounds good. Yeah.
I would only caution that, as I mentioned, we have to make sure that Community and Economic Development meets because there is a deadline. The next meeting is our deadline for having it passed.
August.
Really?
Is it, is it your suggestion that it may be unnecessary for a committee hearing?
That is my suggestion. You could keep it right within the council and not refer it to, to a committee.
All right. Then I would accept that, and I would suggest that we do in fact retain this at the council level for consideration at our, at our next meeting in August.
We still got a motion, right? We draw the second?
I'll, I'll make that motion. Second, our Consulor?
Yes.
Very good. Discussion? Seeing none. We could have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And proposed ordinance FY twenty-two dash zero twenty-five, general ordinance, chapter fifty, buildings, article two, naming of town buildings and facilities. And I will defer to Consulor Moore for comment.
Sure. So maybe first some background. I think we have at least two and maybe three potential facility naming requests on the horizon. The Mitchell School, although everyone, I think, knows and assumes it will be the Mitchell School. There isn't a formal process for that. And then there's also, I've received some discussion around the old high school. And so I, as I understand it, there's no formal process today in Bridgewater for reviewing and authorizing town facility naming. So that means that we're at the risk of names being changed. We're at the risk of confusion over who can change names and create names. There's the traditional risk of naming being done for personal political gain. There's some confusion around philanthropic naming, and then probably, you know, the primary thing is potentially some confusion around how somebody's request naming and who acts on that request. So I'm proposing this just to give us a formal policy to review those. The language I put in likely overshoots our needs a little bit. For me personally, I'm really just pushing for some language that helps us establish a policy for buildings and parks. But when I looked around at other towns, most of them included things like street names and some other capable, other town-owned assets. So I did include that more for discussion than, than out of a drive for that. So just to, to maybe talk about how this would work if we passed it. What this is proposing is that if somebody thinks we should name a building in town, they would submit that naming request along with some required fields, you know, who is the person or activity that this is about? You know, where is the building, that sort of thing? They submit that to the town manager. The town manager then reviews it, does some research to understand financial implications and other implications, and then would bring that back to the council for consideration. The council would review it and allow for public comment to make sure that the public had the opportunity to weigh, weigh in on a naming event. And then at a future meeting, at the next meeting, the town council would vote. And so today, we, we don't have a policy like this. The Mitchell School is the Mitchell School because we wrote that on a document earlier. But if somebody came along next week and said, I want to name it something different, there isn't a policy that we would use to react to that. So I'm certainly in favor of keeping it the Mitchell School and would love to just put that on paper. Just closing out a little bit, the old high school. I have kids there, and when you ask where they're going, they say the old high school or the old Mitchell at the middle. It is a part of our school system. I would love to, to entertain ideas to give it its own identity along with the, the school committee. So I think having a formal process where we could, and we could do that would be a good thing for the town.
Thank you, Consulor. I would entertain a motion for?
Mr. Mr. President, can I just a quick information to Mr. Moore? Correct me if I'm wrong, but to naming schools, there is a process that the school committee goes through before they decide naming a building or a school, correct?
So that the interesting thing is the school committee can name schools that they own, which is the high school. This is my understanding, but I would encourage our town attorney or town manager to correct me. In the case of all of the schools that are actually in the town, the elementary schools, for us and for Rainham, those are still owned by Bridgewater but leased back to the school, and they don't have naming rights. We have not given them naming rights as part of that agreement. So they are technically still town-owned buildings. So we are the, the body that would, would name them. That is.
If, if, I don't know if we'll have an answer today, and maybe this is for a committee discussion, but I don't particularly think that is accurate in regards to control over the buildings in each town by the school committee. Obviously, the high school is jointly owned by, by the district. But I think there is some specific language in regards to the individual buildings in the town, and it's still under the purview of the school committee.
So I think it, I think we should get an answer on this, but my understanding is, although our district agreement asks us to create a lease so that there is official language, I don't believe that we've done that in the past. So I don't think there is currently an agreement, a formal agreement that states something one way or the other. So this would be part of the action to sort of clean up that so everyone's on the same page.
Are you saying that we, we, we've never had a lease? I'm a little confused.
That's my understanding, yes.
Mr. President, through you to Mr. Dutton, even though I know it's dated, leases for the town buildings, correct? The schools, I should say, with the district, correct?
I didn't hear the first part, Counselor, but I think you're asking if we have leases with the, with the district for the schools. And I don't, it is referenced in the regional agreement, but I don't believe we have ever executed an actual lease. I, I could be wrong, but I haven't found one.
I, I think we'll have to do some research on that. I know those documents are dated because we've worked on them for a long time. But my understanding and my recollection is there is, there is a lease out there that we're gonna need, we're gonna need to review as well. I'm, and, and again, we can bring this, I'm not really comfortable with us having the final say over schools when I believe, truly believe it's the school committee's responsibility to go through a process of naming a school or a gym or a library. I mean, that's, that's part of the reason why we have a school committee. And I just, a little concerned that we're starting to pull some of their authority into our purview, which I, I would not be in favor of. So that's just my comment. I know we're gonna refer it off, but I do have some concerns with this in regards to the schools.
I'll make a motion to, sorry. I'll make a motion to move it to Rules and Procedures, and then that committee can do that research.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to refer the matter to the Rules and Procedures Committee. Consulor Moore?
So just a final discussion. So I know I use the schools as two examples. I do think even outside of the schools, and we should certainly get the feedback on that. There are other buildings in town that, that could be candidates for naming, could be where we could recognize people. There could be confusion over who names them in recreation, et cetera. So I think it would be good for us to just have a policy that we've agreed to on how that happens. So even independent of the school question, I would encourage the, the committee to look at it just as a town policy.
Thank you, Consulor. We have a motion and a second, and if there's no further discussion, I would ask please for a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yep.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to citizen comments. If there are any citizens who care to offer comments, please step forward. Please go right ahead. Mrs. Hanson.
Hanson Pleasant Street. Just a couple of quick, hopefully quick. Mr. Wood, you had mentioned about the house on Main Street that no one seems to be, you know, up in arms about that. That's not necessarily true because when I was at one of the meetings, I, I think it's a planning board meeting, there was concern and when they found out that that house may be torn down, and I heard it before, I was like, oh, it's such a, you know, it's a shame that that house would be torn down. I think part of the reason it's not well-publicized. So you're not gonna get a reaction in this town unless it's out there. So that would be, but I do feel that there was some concern about it. It wasn't totally, no one cared. I think it's because no one knows about it. Mr. Moore, you had, I think you were asking about what's the business benefit of selling raw milk or what the gain is, something like that. I did send a letter, and I'm hoping you guys, sorry, you guys, the county town counselor, got my two emails. But right now, there's about one hundred, a hundred and one dairy farms in Massachusetts. Left in Massachusetts, and approximately thirty percent of those sell raw milk. By selling raw milk, these farms are able to stay alive. It helps keep open space. Cows can graze, et cetera. The price of milk you pay in the store is not reflective of what a farmer gets. The farmer gets nothing. And they do all the work, seven days a week, sixteen hours a day. Never mind the cows getting, have to work. But they get about twenty dollars per hundred pounds of milk produced, which is only eleven point six two gallons. That's before all the expenses they have, the trucking expenses that they have to pay, fees, handlers, feed for the cows, et cetera. So farmers don't get much. But with raw milk, there is a lot of expense because they have to do a lot of upgrade to their farms to meet the regulations. But they can, and people will pay it. They get, I wrote it down, but they get like six to, they can get six to ten or, I don't know, would you say six to dollars a gallon or four? Yeah, six, ten dollars a gallon. Whereas a farmer who does all that other, you know, that does it for producing for pasteurization, you know, gets nothing. So there is an economical advantage. There is a lot of expense because they have insurance. So just want to let you know, but, and just the love of doing it, farming, you know. And just to mention, years ago, my husband was told that Bridgewater, by a Board of Health member, this was many years ago, that it was banned in Massachusetts, raw milk. So he never pursued it because it was banned. He didn't think to look into it because he was trusting that, well, that's the way it is. It's a shame because he could have been doing raw milk for years if he wanted to. And that's a lot of lost time. Now, you know, a lot of things have changed in life, and like, there's no dairy farms left in Bridgewater. We have some cows, but it's not a dairy farm. But it doesn't have to be a mass production farm. It can be a couple of goats. It can be a couple of cows. Bridgewater doesn't have a space. They have a lot of dairy farms. So you don't have to be worried that it's gonna be a mass production in Bridgewater, and only people that really want the milk is gonna get it. They're gonna understand there is risk. No one said there isn't. But there's a lot of regulations and you, you just have to know how to, if you never farmed, you don't know what goes into it. So I just wanted to answer that, and I, I won't go into everything that Mr. Chase put because it is, was very one-sided. So we do need to present, if there was any ever consideration of this town of banning the sale of raw milk, that would be so unfair to have people go through all that and then say, we're gonna ban it. That's, that's a big expense for a farm to go through. So you really have to look at the pros and cons and how Massachusetts does it, not the whole United States. And if you look at the numbers for the whole United States, that's not very big compared to other outbreaks. And as Mr. Souza said, there's lettuce and other, and Mr. Gallagher, there's other foods that have been worse. So, and you don't have to drink it if you don't want to. So I just want to make sure that this is never come to a ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Any further comments? Dr. Hunt?
Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. I'm gonna continue the milk story a bit. I appreciate greatly the presentation of effects and impact. Unfortunately, there are missing, I'm a scientist. I've got two advanced degrees. I'm a practicing scientist for over forty years, retired for eleven, still trying to be a scientist. There are several things that were missing from the presentation, and this is a critique, not a criticism. Number one, the prevalence of milk-caused health issues was not discussed. That means, how prevalent was it within a population of milk drinkers? If you had a hundred thousand raw milk drinkers, the prevalence could be ten percent. That's probably not good. It could be one percent. So the prevalence of those disease, those impacts from raw milk are not quite as represented in those studies, which actually only looked at the incident, not the incidents, but the it was fifty percent of a certain it was fifty percent of a certain outbreak. That outbreak was driven by other factors, but that outbreak was also relative to how many milk drinker, raw milk drinkers there were. That was never in the discussion at all. The set, uh so once it's incidence of it, there is also the prevalence. There are no risk assessments presented in the discussion. As some of the folks in this council understand, risk assessment is a key element of determining what the risk is of drinking raw milk. These were all studies about when something happened. It's not a risk assessment. So if there's any information on the risk assessment, I think it should be presented to the public. And the third thing I'll say is the context. The context is, as I said earlier, the number of raw milk drinkers was never part of any of those studies. It was always based on an event or a series of events and where milk were causing that. So like I said, if you had a hundred thousand raw milk drinkers, actually, how many of those that had an impact were in fact part of that population? Thank you very much. I appreciate the information. Uh and as a scientist, uh I understand the difficulty of translating scientific information to public presentations. I've done it a few times, failed few, made a few successes. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor Hunt. Uh any further public comment? Yes, please.
My name is Pam Madden. I live on Berry Drive and I'm gonna mention something about raw milk. Surprise, surprise. Just as kind of an opposing view to the presentation tonight, I would say that if we strictly followed all food safety guidelines, we wouldn't eat raw cookie dough, raw oysters, or medium rare steak. I don't think people wanna live that way. Um I would argue that a lot of what we eat isn't safe. We hear all the time about recalls and illnesses caused by lettuce, meat and other foods. These are usually produced by large corporations. Um in terms of the history of uh pasteurization. Hold on just a second, I lost my. Um pasteurized milk, meaning it's heated over a hundred and sixty degrees Fahrenheit, is a relatively new product. Pasteurization came about less than a century ago and is a reaction to milk produced in urban dairies from cows kept in confinement and fed industrial waste largely from distilleries. Contamination of such milk was controlled by heating it to kill all bacteria, both the good and the bad. Eventually, the urban dairies disappeared, but pasteurization remained. Now there's a growing number of people learning that fresh milk from nearby dairy farms um can be a good thing. We're lucky to live in Massachusetts, which we, which has detailed regulations and oversight. I would feel more comfortable drinking raw milk that is produced here in town than consuming food that's been grown in one location, processed in another, and then shipped around the country all in an effort to make as much profit as possible. Um I would just hope in the future that efforts by the town council are spent on the long issue, long list of issues that are viewed as priorities by Bridgewater residents and hopefully not concerned about raw milk. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? Yes, please, sir.
Of all these studies can be used, if somebody wants certain results, they're paying somebody to do these studies. In my opinion, and on both sides of the article. Um and in comment for uh previous speaker, um there are tens of millions of people that drink raw milk in the United States. If it's a hundred million, but it's some, it's in the tens of millions. Um and then one comment on Mister Chase's presentation in that uh the Whittier Farms article. That was pasteurized milk that caused those problems with the those people. The milk was processed and after they processed it, they ran it, they ran it in the chocolate and coffee flavoring without pasteurizing it again. And that's my understanding of what happened to that. Now, Whittier Farms, I think if you re- it did say pasteurized on the screen were Whittier Farms Listeria outbreak. And that was uh the only one I've heard of in Massachusetts, other than another dairy adding too much vitamin D to the milk and causing issues with somebody else when that, after it was pasteurized. So uh and like my wife said, uh the Board of Health came up and inspected the barn uh back in two thousand and nine, I think, uh three members and uh they all said that there was a regulation that prohibited raw milk sale in Bridgewater. Um and they said that uh they would go along with the uh state, uh they would change that if the state gave the approval to it. Um they wanted to test the bedding, uh the hay, they wanted to test everything. So it it sound, it made it almost ridiculous to even think about it when they came, when they came and inspected the barn. So um I'd kind of forgotten about it, but every time I sell a cow to another dairy, I I'm seeing my hopes of getting into this going further and further away. So um that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Uh thank you, Mister Hanson. Uh further public comment? Seeing none. We'll turn to a council comment and I think I'll begin the the evening with Counselor Wood.
Thank you. Um let's stay on the milk subject for just a minute, just a minute, just a minute. Um you know, I don't go into something like this blindly. The the scientific research is there. What was presented tonight was really just the surface of what's there. The the studies of things that are uh uh you know, the depth of the studies are are very, very good. So what wasn't presented tonight, which I had found in my research, is that prior to, I think it was nineteen thirty-eight, and I can cite the resource I've, if you need it, twenty-five percent of foodborne illnesses were caused by raw milk. So that speaks to the percentage of raw milk drinkers and how often uh people got sick and what they got sick by. You can't boil lettuce. You can boil raw milk, not boil it, but you know what I mean. Um and and you know, you can set up all sorts of analogies. Hey, I played with lawn darts when I was a kid and I didn't get killed, so lawn darts must be good. Um you know, it's it's foolish to make that comparison, but it is the same thing. The, if properly handled, I agree. Raw milk immediately consumed or soon after is and kept at the low temperature so that the listeria can't grow and the other um levels of bacteria in there can't grow. You know, you're perfectly fine, but it's like taking potato salad to a barbecue. Leave it in the sun for a few hours. That becomes a deadly element. And put raw milk into a baby's bottle and take it to the beach and that becomes a hazard. And that's really where it comes in, not the people that cautiously use it. It's it's when it gets into into the greater public. But as I said, we don't have anything to do with it. It's now the the relationship between the state and the farm. And uh we're kind of out of it. So I'll leave it at that with the last comment that when this first came up, I called my uncle and my uncle, his whole family used to own Brock's Dairy up in, up in Lawrence. And um I asked him what he thought about raw milk. He says, don't do it. He says, before pasteurization, kids used to get sick all the time. And you know, that's that plus the basis of the scientific items that we've looked at. Not a single U S government agency approves raw milk of raw milk and it can't cross state lines because there's the grade A laws that came into effect. Um now, and uh on the ninety-six Main Street, um I agree that not a lot of people know that. Uh years and years ago, we put in an ordinance uh for the demolition ordinance. I don't remember what year it was, probably like ten years ago, maybe, something like that. Um I think this would be the first exercise of that, so it'll be interesting to see how the process goes. Um and if all the points are hit the right way. Um and I don't, you know, I don't know any way to advertise it. It's it's in the agendas. Um it's listed on all the agendas. It's been talked about in forty-seven meetings. Um we talked about it. It was discussed on social media. So you know, it is what it is. Um I wanna say thank you and a big thank you to the Fourth of July Committee. Um as we've said many times, the committee works independently from the town of Bridgewater, but works with the town of Bridgewater, um gets no funding from our budget process and raises all the funds to bring that spectacular show and put the parade on and and the other things. And it's a small committee. And they they work their butts off for the for the month and a half prior to the show. And they make it happen every year, and I hope they can do it next year because it was really good this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh Counselor Susan.
Oh, I don't wanna milk it to death. I I had to say that. Uh really nothing this evening. Uh again, the Fourth of July Committee, thank them. They did a lot of work. Uh I did help them a little bit what I could. And that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Moore.
Uh I think echoing the comments about the fireworks. Um this is actually the first time I've seen it in a while. We're normally out of town for a family thing this year. We weren't. Um and it was by far the best fireworks display I've ever seen. Um and the experience was amazing and I can't say enough to the committee that worked tirelessly to advertise it, to raise money for it, to arrange parking for it. Um it is uh an amazing thing to see the town come together to put that on. Uh and it was, it was brilliant. Um so thank you to everyone who was involved with that. Uh the next thing, you know, I did bring up the naming ordinance. Uh and I I do have concerns about naming in general. Um and you know, I I know the Mitchell family, so and I'm sure anyone else who does knows that that's the right name for that school. Um but politics happens, people change uh and names change. And I think we recently saw an activity where a group suspended their policy on naming so that they could name it for someone who's living and could, you know, so uh that that raised some just awareness around what could happen. And so for me, that the the attention to naming, uh I think just kind of protects you know, the kind of original intent of some of these building naming activities. So I I appreciate the consideration on that. I think that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor George.
Thank you, Mister President. Um I just wanna echo again uh in regards to the July fourth celebration. Um the parade was was awesome and it was really nice to see so many people out. It was a gorgeous day. So many people out celebrating, enjoying themselves. The committee, you know, put on a a great parade, attracted people to the parade that um I I don't think I've ever seen and I don't know how many years I've gone. So it was really nice, you know, to see new participation in that parade. I can't remember the last time I saw so many Jeeps in in one area, uh which I thought was really neat. Um the fireworks were outstanding and they always are. I I think one of the things that people have to keep in mind, leading up to the Fourth of July, I was reading a lot of stories that you know, either towns were not having July fourth fireworks because of budgetary issues, but also there were some uh fireworks supply companies that were having supply chain issues that were canceling fireworks for a town. It wasn't that the town couldn't pay, it was the company couldn't get the fireworks for the show. So we had a, you know, back to back home run on that as well. One thing I would say um in leaving is hopefully this will change in the future, but um the trash that was left at the field, I think was a little disappointing not to take away from it. You know, but hopefully that's just a one-time occurrence um from that perspective. So I think that's great. I know they've already started um their fundraising activity basically today because they really spent every dime that they had to put on uh the parade and the fireworks. So I think that was great. Um and that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mister President. Yes, as everyone has mentioned, the July fourth um festivities in this town went off pretty, pretty well. It was, it was a great day to be in Bridgewater, starting with the parade to the Arts Festival that was down at the the old high school or the Mitchell, whatever the name of this. Anyway, um to the, to the fireworks uh at night, um huge crowd down there. As far as I know, there were hopefully no incidents and we got through the night. Um and people can came the next day to help pick up the trash. But as Counselor George said, that the this year, they they ran the full operation with pretty much all the funds that they had raised. So they're starting now with a little bit less money than they usually do, so they could certainly use a a good start to the Fourth of July, which is only three hundred and fifty-seven days away. So um hopefully some fundraising will be going going on soon and hopefully people can can donate. But it was, it was a great day. In Bridgewater, it always is. They always do a great job and it's only a small group of people that put this on.
Well, thank you, Counselor. Uh for myself, I certainly um want to also ju- join the array of voices uh in support of the work of the Fourth of July Committee and all the volunteers who made it possible. Uh I participated as a number of us did in the Fourth of July Parade. I was really quite uh astounded by the turnout. Um you know, particularly along uh, I I thought along uh Main Street and of course, right at the, at the Town Common, uh it was, or uh Rudy Team rather, in the Town Common. I thought that uh it was probably the largest turnout I had seen in town in my experience for any parade event. And of course, the weather contributed greatly. It was a wonderful day to be out and I think everyone was uh relieved to um you know, get out and do something in public that they maybe haven't been able to do uh and feel very safe about for the past couple of years. Uh so I thought all in all, it was a tremendous effort and uh kudos to all the volunteers and uh uh the committee who helped make that possible. Um just with respect to raw milk, I I wanna thank uh everyone for your indulgence tonight in um listening to my presentation. I know that that was very lengthy. Uh it was somewhat repetitive. Um the reason that I brought it forward tonight, firstly, I was fully aware uh at the outset that, in fact, the town has no control over the sale of raw milk in Bridgewater. It's a matter for state regulation. I was aware of the fact that the Board of Health no longer has a uh regulation prohibiting or restricting in any manner the sale of raw milk. But I felt very strongly that as a matter of public interest, it is important for the public to recognize the hazards implicit in the sale of raw milk and raw milk products. Um as attested by, you know, the entire scientific community. And again, I was not trying to um infuse my my own opinion in the matter, although it is clear, I'm sure to everyone, that I'm personally opposed to the sale of raw milk. And there's no effort underway to uh of which I'm aware, to attempt to prohibit the sale of raw milk in Bridgewater. Uh so I would like to particularly thank Mister and Mrs. Hanson for your appearance tonight and your comments, as well as at the committee meeting uh last week. And Mrs. Hanson, we all did in fact receive each of your emails uh that were very informative and very helpful. In no manner uh have my comments this evening or previously um been intended to discourage or disrespect what you bring to the town. Uh because we know that you run an admirable operation. We know that you have you you are in some respects really the only, I think, complete family farm in operation in Bridgewater. And certainly you've expanded your efforts in recent years. Uh yeah, with with the with the building of your 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 farms, I'll call it a farm stand. It's not a farm stand, is it? It's really much more than that. But I know that and I know that from personal experience. And so I I give you full credit and I in no manner wish to, you know, uh provide any impediment to your ability to maximize the economic potential of your business. My concern is strictly one from the standpoint of public health and public safety, which I thought is not widely known or accepted and should be given more credence. Uh so to that end, I I just want to, uh once again, thank you for all of your comments and all of your input. As you know, uh you are perfectly free to approach the state and to seek uh applica- to prepare an application for registration for a certificate of, certificate of registration. Uh and should you do that, I I certainly wish you the best. Um it's uh, it's not my cup of tea, uh but I think that you and others here this evening have uh made the case that uh for those people who are so inclined they should be able to do so if they, if they see fit. And I know that you'll put ample preparation into the various regulatory requirements to ensure uh safe delivery of Preparation into the various regulatory requirements to ensure uh, safe delivery of a product. Uh, so that's my only real comment uh, to close our evening discussion on the matter of, of raw milk. And with that, I have uh, no further comment for this evening, but I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion?
No discussion.
A roll call vote, please.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.